Welcome, everyone. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll go ahead and entertain a motion for the approval of tonight's agenda.
I'll move to approve tonight's agenda as opposed to... Sorry.
Motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We are going to do things a little out of order. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code 74206, one B and, well, actually just D. B and D.
I'll move to enter into executive session per Idaho Code 74206, one B and D.
Sorry, go ahead.
Need a roll call vote?
Chair Thompson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Grissom?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Bain?
Yes.
Trustee Cooney?
Yes.
Going into executive session. 6:02. 12:02. Let's just make a number. It's all good. I do have a few announcements. I just want to remind everyone that these board meetings are our business board meetings. They're held in public, not public board meetings. We are governed by Idaho Code Title 33, Chapter 5, and we follow our district policies and IDAPA. The time for public input is provided for the public to express themselves to the board. It is not time to engage with the board, nor is it a time for question and answers. The board, in its discretion, may ask clarifying questions to ensure it understands the input provided. However, no discussion or conversation takes place. Additionally, at the July 27, 2022 special board meeting, based on the recommendation by our current superintendent that was formulated from the review comments provided by our parents and community members, the board denied the use of the I-Ready reading curriculum. For transparency purposes, the I-Ready reading curriculum was placed in our schools at the direction of the prior superintendent. The curriculum was implemented as a supplement and without board approval or any form of curriculum adoption process. It is the board's intention to provide teachers with the curriculum and resources they need to achieve excellence when educating our children. This will be attained through a curriculum adoption process that follows approved policy and implemented procedures. Are there any other announcements by anyone?
I have one.
Yes.
Mine's a fun one. The district received a donation from the Marcus Anderson Family Foundation of $25,000. So this, these two gentlemen who, one of whom graduated from Priest River High School and the other from Lakeland High School, they, when they were younger, joined together to form a company, which they sold, and they took some of the proceeds to create a foundation. And this year, they're giving away $100,000, and they gave them to the four school districts that have most impacted their lives. Lakeland was the first to receive our money.
That's awesome.
That is incredible.
Their only task is that it goes directly to our kids.
Okay.
I have a couple of ideas and things that I'd like to use it for, but it's very generous.
Yes.
Their PR person wrote a press release, so that should be in the paper tomorrow.
How exciting.
So cool.
Yeah.
That's great.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to public input. We have Stacy Lawler, who is presenting. Would like to discuss apparent perspective on the sources of strength, the suicide prevention program. You do have three minutes.
Okay. First of all, thank you for allowing me an opportunity to speak to you today. I've been in front of this board a few times wearing a different hat. One time, I was a teacher talking to you about sources of strength. One time, I was the Idaho State Teacher of the Year talking to you about the importance of mental health. And this time today, I am talking to you as a patron of this community for over 20 years, as well as a parent of two children who attended and graduated from the Lakeland School District. I believe our lives are defined by moments, especially the ones that we are unprepared for. My moment was on a fall afternoon in 2014 when my then-18-year-old son called to tell me he had a plan to end his life. My life shifted dramatically with that phone call, and my sole purpose became to make sure I would never find myself unprepared again. My deep dive into the world of mental health began in earnest consulting counselors, psychiatrists, psychiatrists and other mental health providers. My husband and I found ourselves managing our son's suicidal ideation and keeping him safe. However, it became obvious that I was learning about programs that could have helped him prior to the fall of 2014. Fast forward three years. My daughter's home on Christmas break, her freshman year in college. It became very obvious that she was struggling. Unlike my son's situation, I knew the signs of depression. And most importantly, I was prepared to help her. I have a very vivid memory of sitting at the kitchen table with my daughter with the sources of strength wheel between us, explaining what the eight pieces or parts or sources are. I told her that if she had three or more of those parts, they could act as kind of a net to catch her if she was struggling. I asked her, how many of these sources does she have? Without hesitation, she looked at me and said zero. By the time she headed back to college, we had a plan. There were parts of her wheel she had no control over. So we focused on the parts that she could control: generosity, mentors, positive friends. This was a visual image for her, something tangible for her to take back to college so she could work and continue to use that wheel throughout the rest of her college career. I stand here before you as a parent of two kids who struggle with anxiety and depression. They have had very different experiences along their mental health journeys. My oldest spent most of his time alone, struggling. My daughter had the benefit of having a brother who had already struggled. I believe the biggest difference between my children is sources of strength. The National Alliance on Mental Illness reported a 170% increase in suicide mortality last year. Idaho ranks number five in suicide rates nationwide. This is the time that we need to increase awareness about suicide prevention, like sources of strength. Thank you again for allowing me to speak to you about a program that I know has the ability to save lives.
Thank you. Moving on to the report agenda. The first item is the chair report. The reason that's there is it's a placeholder for me to report to you all with what's going on in between the meetings that I'm working with or working on or whatever. Is that something you all would be interested in receiving? Okay.
I would.
Okay, perfect. Because I honestly think it would be less, it will be less full than prior because we are getting way more communication about what our superintendent's doing now. But I do want to make sure you all are aware of what I'm doing also. Because it's just, I mean, constantly running.
I would appreciate it. I just know that there's a lot of times where, you know, somebody, anybody will say, "Well, I've talked to Michelle Moss." "Well, I've talked to Board Chair Thompson." And it's like, oh, okay. That's good.
Not a problem. So there isn't a report tonight. I just wanted to make sure everybody wanted one, and there will be at the next board meeting. Moving on to the financial report. Do we have any questions or comments or concerns, thoughts on the financial report? I have one. I do want to make sure... Oh, wait. Oh, yeah. Brian, on page two of the monthly budget status report for the month of July 2022, the budget states that it's the 2122 budget, but yet on the first page, it says it's the 2223 year. So was that just an error or no?
Yes, that's an error. I just want to update the report.
Perfect.
Yeah, the 2223. Yeah, I'll make sure we get that done.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Brian, I have one other question. I know that taxing agencies just got an email from the county treasurer regarding the penalties of interest on delinquent taxes and that they're not going to pass those on to taxing agencies anymore, that the county is keeping those.
Correct.
How much of our budget actually comes? I mean, how will that affect our budget?
Yeah, I actually did personally give a call to the county treasurer. Yeah, it's sort of interesting. But yeah, to be direct, we, I budgeted $50,000. Last year, we received about 70. In the last few years, it's been anywhere from really 50 to 65, 70. And I usually just take the low number for budget. But we definitely do budget those revenues and anticipate to get some of those dollars. And so, yeah, that's...
That was kind of a small mistake, I just would like...
Yeah, that's... For the board members who, you know, haven't heard, the, we got an email from the county treasurer that there is, in their interpretation ambiguity in state law, and they don't have to pass through penalty and interest. And so they're going to keep it to recover their costs for collections. So upon their decision. Right, and so I gave them a call. Well, first I responded saying that, you know, maybe there's a, there could be an argument, I suppose, for maybe some of the cities and the taxing districts that get the automatic 3%, and they don't have to go out for a vote. I said, but school districts, I said, we have to, the only thing we collect, except for the minimal tort levy, is voter approval. And I said, I think the intent of that voter approval, those dollars should follow to that agency. And it certainly isn't costing you $70,000 for collections. I mean, eventually when I talk to them, it's helping just cover the cost of county operations. And so that was my email. And then I, he has, he replied very quickly, which is nice. I think it was sort of a standard reply he was giving to a lot of the people who probably who reached out. And, you know, I gave him a call. It was a good conversation. I mean, you know, as far as being, you know, where are you coming from and what you're thinking. And he just thinks the interpretation that those dollars should stay with the county. And I sort of gave two points. One, I just told you I think that being voter approved, they should follow. And two, that he had a comment saying that this is a windfall, that we don't want to anticipate these dollars. I said, well, I said, it's not a windfall. I budgeted these dollars. There's actually a code in, there is penalty in delinquent taxes is an I-Farm revenue code that we use. So it's not like I made that code up. And that we do anticipate it, and that for him to come after our budget hearing and notify us, or not even have the conversation beforehand, you know, really is, you know, if we're trying to be partners with the county and we're trying to, you know, be a community and work together as agencies, that that wasn't very, that was not in the best spirit of cooperation and trying to see what their perspective is and why he might be going that way. I know that some other agencies, cities and counties have heartburn and have sent formal letters. And, you know, there could be, maybe the legislature will clear things up this session. There could be, you know, it's possible there's some legal action that could be taken. As I understand it, Cooney County would be the only county in the state to do so, as I understand, but I'm not 100% sure.
That is what, that is the word from Idaho State Tax Commission.
Is it? Okay.
Said that it...
Alan said that.
Yeah, nobody, nobody else is actually doing it, so.
And did they make this decision without a vote of the commissioners?
I don't know that. It was, you know, Steve Matheson was who I talked to.
And that's who sent the email.
And that's who sent the email. So I, my guess is he said that they were able to... I don't know, I don't want, because this is off the top of my head.
Sure, yeah.
I think that they're able to maybe not take the full 3% by doing this. In other words, they were able to reduce the, at the Cooney County level, what their ask was to buy this additional revenue.
All the other taxing entities are subsidizing the county so they don't have to take the 3%.
I...
Well, I'm just wondering if we should send a letter, a formal response? Because, you know, what everybody forgets about schools is that, like you explained with the 3%, but schools even under the statute are not treated like every other political subdivision. I mean, you know that, right? So how can they apply when we don't even fit that? We don't even fit public facility. How can they apply these statutory definitions that we're not defining yet? You know, I, I mean, maybe we need a formal, at least, hey, we disagree because of blah, blah, blah.
Did, in the email or in your conversation, did he cite specific language in the law that he was hanging his hat on?
Yeah. Yeah, he's, I think he stated code and things like that, yeah.
But there isn't really code that allows it or disallows it? Like, it doesn't say who's it, who it belongs to?
Just a broad statement. Can you share that with us so we can read it, your email?
Sure, yeah, I can forward the email to the whole group.
That would be great. And what was the total amount? Do we know what that amount would have been?
Well, I budgeted $50,000 this year. I mean, you obviously haven't received any.
Yeah.
Last year, you know, we received, we're averaging probably about 60 to 65. Everybody received 70. But we budget 50, so... You know, it is definitely, like I said, that, you know, in the official code in the state, you know, the state asks us, when I collect the property taxes, that the supplemental levy dollars is one revenue code and delinquent and penalty taxes are another revenue code. So I, we, we track it as it comes in like that.
Yeah, that's a big chunk of money to the district. And it has almost two teachers down there.
Which teacher does he want us to...
Right, yeah.
Basically, the fact that we don't receive those funds. So would be my question to him.
Thank you, Brian.
You're welcome.
I appreciate you.
Thanks.
And thank you for responding to him and letting him know.
At least say something.
But I think, I agree with Ramona on kind of a formal letter that we...
Disagree.
Disagreed with the decision.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any further discussion on financials? Okay. Any comments or questions on the safety update? What is the access pin, Lisa?
That's, we remember we had a conversation, the student side of Lakeland High School. That door has never been secured.
Okay, so it's the...
It's a real key card thing.
Gotcha, okay.
That should be...
I thought, but I wasn't sure.
Yeah, they're still working on that. And then for the rest of the board, I did request that we add an executive session on the front end of our workshop next Monday so that our new armed district safety specialist can come and visit with the board for, just so you can get to meet him and ask any question he might have with him.
Perfect.
Awesome, thank you. Yep.
Any further discussion on the safety report?
Okay, thank you.
Moving on to old business. We have the follow-up to board questions from the June 13 meeting. Okay, so we found out that the water credits were because the meters weren't working correctly. Plant facility funds are their own funds. They're not in the capital project funds. We do not need to require, we do not need to amend the budget by our allocation of funds into the capital projects fund. Correct, Brian?
Correct.
Okay. However, we can, if the board wants to do so, so that everything looks copacetic. And we don't have to teach to Juneteenth if we're in session during summer. Those, we don't have to make it a do. Does anybody have any questions or further information? Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda. First item on the consent agenda is the minutes of the previous meeting, meetings. I personally would like to table them. In reviewing them, I feel like we're falling back into more of a transcription of the meeting as opposed to minutes. And so I'd like to maybe work with Rosina or Bob wants to work with Rosina, just to try and... I did ask Rosina to try to look and see if there's any special training courses that might be able to help her hone into what we're supposed to actually pick out and put in meeting minutes. I mean, it is important to have the information in there, but when we're going to the point of transcribing, it's way too long. On top of the fact that we are flipping around with identifying the superintendent as Superintendent Arnold, and then we refer to her as Mrs. Arnold, I think we need to maintain consistency so that the reader knows who Mrs. Arnold is as the superintendent. So I personally would like to table them. If I can help her, and we can bring him back on Monday's workshop, I have no problem with that. But I don't know, because I have to study for... I've only got so many minutes in my days. The minutes of the committee meeting, I, those are, there was nothing glaring on those. And then on the HR report, we have the alternate authorizations for four people. I did ask HR Director Cunningham, I guess the state now allows students, when they're in their interim teaching, that there can be an endorsement to actually allow them to teach. So we'll be doing that with one of them, I believe. Is that correct, Brooke?
We have one right now and one coming up.
Right.
So not on here, there's another one going to come before us at a different meeting? Is that what you were talking about?
Yes. And this is just to help us along, trying to hire teachers and, you know...
So that's what I was going to ask. There just, we just didn't have any response to these, specifically these positions. I mean, the other, some of them were already underneath this alternative authorization, right? We already did that.
Yeah, and so the one that is the student teacher, that is a very hard-to-fill position. Unique. I don't know if it would be like, it's not hard to fill, like special education. But it is difficult to find somebody that's endorsed in both those things. And then, and then the other one that's coming up is kind of unique too, so. But it's, the struggle is real.
So what will Emma be teaching?
ELA in theater.
Okay.
Sorry, I thought I mentioned that. Yeah, it's the drama endorsement that is so hard to find these days. You do. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so ELA in theater, sorry.
I try to be detailed.
You are very detailed, and I do appreciate it.
And we have the memo of what's, who's been hired, and then we have the resignations. Do we need to have any discussion on those?
I do.
Then we have the regular and special bills. Do we have any questions or comments on those?
No.
And if there's no further discussion on the consent agenda, well, I would like to, I make a motion to table the minutes of the previous meetings out of the consent agenda and to table them to another meeting.
Second.
Having a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. And I'll entertain a motion on the consent agenda, remaining items.
I'm over. Approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Having a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to new business, under curriculum, we have supplemental resources. And we have parent feedback. Is that there?
We have seen that we have gotten before, right? Some look familiar and some didn't. So that's what I was, and I didn't go back and look at the prior meeting, meetings.
One of them... Oh, I'm sorry.
That was, that was it.
I do have a question on the parent comment. There were some good points that were pointed out. Do we, Lisa, can, do you know if we have the book Wolf Hollow?
I do not know.
Okay.
Let's see if our librarians have our, little... Thinking of our website, our search engine. Have a look. I don't see it yet.
Okay. Well, based on the parent input, there is a universal concern. Or they all had the same concern over the book, Everything Sad is Untrue. And I did read through the reviews, and it, yeah. I was surprised. So the parent recommendation is to not approve Everything Sad is Untrue. And there was concern with button pusher and my own lightning, I believe. But the biggest one that there was a strong concern about was Everything Sad is Untrue. Where are these?
Great, I'm talking through these. Were they just across the board or...
No, they're, the three that had a comment were in middle school, Tim and Lake Middle School.
Oh, I see, okay, middle school, so the initial is here, so this outside must be just the initials of the person giving the exact.
Yes, yes. Since, anyone have any conversation please?
Record motion.
Come on, do you have any conversation? I do not. Yes, please.
I will move, we approve the list as presented with the exception of Everything Sad Is Untrue.
I'll second that. Having a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Next, we have the request to approve Dibbles and iStation as, well, Dibbles is the dyslexia screener and iStation, we currently use IRI. For K through three, we'd like to implement it for fourth through eighth. We don't have the financial consideration yet for adding the istation.
I actually, we received it today, so I do have it.
Okay.
These, this item and then the one following kind of go hand in hand. Because my recommendation for I1C is going to be that we not use iReady reading diagnostics. So iStation provides an opportunity for us to have longitudinal data, K8 in the area of reading without the access to those stories and the pathways and things that we've been a little bit concerned about. The cost for one year, and there would be a discount if we wanted to do three, three years. The one that she, the quote she gave today was for one year is $24,000 for grades four through eight.
Okay.
And so the way that iStation works is it's a monthly, short 15 to 30 minute, depending on how much time the kids take, progress monitoring tool so that we can see the growth toward targets for kids in the area of reading. And our, the state pays for K3, it's the tool that we use for the IRI. So we've had that data for kids through those grades forever, but we've never been able to follow that data into the intermediate and middle school level. This would allow us to do that and provide us a diagnostic tool so should the board accept my recommendation for not using iReady.
Was that an annual figure?
She, yeah, this was just a one-year figure. She did in her email let us know that if we were interested in a multi-year, then the price goes down when you, when you secure a multi-year. However, Dr. Pazley and her, Dr. Pazley's and my recommendation to the board would be that we do our science adoption this year and instead of social studies next year, which is what we had planned, that we do the ELA adoption and at that time, we consider all of this in its totality. So my recommendation for this year would be we do a one-year to allow us to get through that adoption cycle to know how to move forward. And then Dibbles is free, we like free.
Well, that's good.
It, yeah. We used to use Dibbles and then Ames Webb became kind of the trend in Idaho, they're very, very similar. They're just quick, one to three-minute probes that you do in a one-on-one situation with kids, gives you really good data on some kids in both math and ELA.
Do we need to have any further discussion? Entertain a motion?
I move that we accept the superintendent's assistant superintendent's recommendation for iStation and Dibbles as presented.
Sergeant.
Having a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We have a request to rescind the iReady reading diagnostics. This was approved last year during the curriculum workshop. And it was just the reading diagnostic tool that was approved. But we want to rescind the approval so that we can take it out of schools.
What we didn't know when we approved it was that as the kids were working through their pathways, there was, there's really no way for teachers to see what kids are going to be exposed to. And with all that we have seen in our digestion of the reading textbooks, we are not confident that we're not going to run into some of those same issues. And in fact, Principal Murphy from Lakeland Middle School said that she didn't hear any concerns about the middle school textbooks last year, but she heard a lot of concerns about the diagnostic, the pathways that are attached to the diagnostic because the kids were doing those at home and parents were able to see them. And they were concerned about some of what was in there. So without us being able to manage that, I don't want to put our teachers in that situation.
Right, that's not, that's not good.
Well, I'll move to accept superintendent's recommendation to rescind the iReady reading diagnostics.
I'll second. Having a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to board policy, we have 1,400 board staff communication, 1,500 board meetings, 3,320 substance and alcohol abuse, 3,330 student discipline, policy 1303, which is the policies and procedures to review annually, policy 4175, these are the required annual notices, and policy 3575, the student data privacy and security. I do want to state, we did just approve the student discipline 3,330 last board meeting. However, it was brought to the policy committee, that staff was a smidge concerned about the, on page five, the exceptions to the gun-free schools. So.
So appropriately placed.
Duck loud.
Deontrix. So we offered clarifying language on point one, the exception to the gun-free school zones. And this is verbatim from statute. Just so that we didn't, the problem is, is when you have seniors at high school that turn 18 and then think they can bring a gun, you know, just to clarify, no, you cannot. So for the staff that was brought back to policy committee and it's, it's a simple clarification with statute language. Does anybody need to have any conversations over any other policies that are brought? No, okay. Then if no one wants to have any further conversation on them, I'll entertain a motion on board policy.
I'll move to approve, approve board policy, the board policies, do I need to list them all out?
No.
As presented.
Second.
Hearing motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to approve the fall athletic schedules. I'm just curious, does Timberlake not have cross-country?
We do, yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
No worries. There is no schedule for cross-country, but there was on Lakeland, so I was a little confused.
I will follow up on that.
Okay.
Just an oversight?
Possibly. It could be my oversight too. Did anybody find this on the schedule? Because I just see so.
Because it's in the spring, isn't it?
Cross-country is fall.
Ball.
Yeah, because there's volleyball, football, and soccer.
So we have a new activities director at Timberlake and I don't know if she knew that she needed to submit those, so she may have done it in a hurry, so I'll follow up with her for that cross-country.
And then if that wants to be brought to September, that'd be cool.
I could have it ready also if you wanted.
For Monday? That'd be even.
Yeah, more creative.
Perfector.
Perfector.
Perfector. Any questions, comments, or thoughts on the athletic schedules for fall? Okay, entertain a motion at this time.
I move that we approve the athletic schedules for fall as presented.
I'll second.
Having a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We have to approve the bus routes. It looks like there is a couple of recommendations for changes. We're going to create a non-transportation zone on the Hidden Valley Route of Hoyt Road and Co- Church Road, which would appear to impact 24 students. These families would then become, would become eligible for in lieu of transportation payments. And then changing the Twin Lakes Village, consolidating to one stop at the convenience store. The stop is within one and a half mile walking, so. So the Twin Lakes Village stop at the convenience store, is that for Twin Lakes Elementary? And the junior high, the high school, the, I'm just curious.
Hello, I'm Jessica, the director.
Jessica, our new transportation director.
Yes.
And so she did the heavy lifting on the routes. And so part of this is a housekeeping item and we come to the district, the board every year to get approved. But we, Jessica worked pretty hard on looking at some routes and we continue to be challenged with finding drivers. And so she looked at paring down some routes to actually effectively eliminate a route to allow us to, because we're short on drivers, she can get into more details, but the church road, you know, up there, going up in that area is certain, it will impact some families, but I'll let Jessica take the lead.
Great. Yeah, so it would actually be at the top of Hidden Valley Road, Hoyt Road, Church Road, Smith, and then the Twin Lakes Village. So what we essentially want to do is make our two longer single-tiered routes short enough that we can have them as a double-tiered route, so we would not have to replace a driver that retired at the end of last year.
What does double-tiered route mean?
So our double-tiered routes go out and pick up the middle school, high schoolers and then go pick up the elementary.
Okay.
Yeah, so up on the hill, those routes are just too long, we don't have enough time to run them as a double-tiered route.
Okay.
So if we could get these changes approved, then we could probably fill all of our routes this year.
Perfect.
Yeah, but if these changes don't go through, then we're going to be sitting probably with at least two to three open routes that office staff will have to cover.
Okay, and then with the Twin Lakes, what is, so is that in a sense we're no longer driving into the village, we're just going to go to the?
Yeah, so Twin Lakes Elementary, when I reevaluate them for safety busing, they're not going to qualify for safety busing anymore because there's now access roads that come out onto Rice.
Right.
So they're technically safe to walk that mile and a half.
Okay.
So, yeah, when I was in school, I think that those access roads weren't there, so they would have had to come out on the highway. And then to change that for the middle school, high school, for Lakeland is just to save, you know, those few extra minutes that it takes to get through there. The roads are really narrow, we always run into something that route runs late a lot because it's getting stuck in the village.
Okay.
So, yeah, and it's within a mile and a half.
Okay, great. Does anyone have any other questions for that?
And has the convenience store consulted on us stopping in that part of the lot or, you know, what is there plowing?
We use that stop as an activity bus stop to turn around, so we've already been stopping there.
Okay.
Yeah. So I don't foresee an issue with that.
Okay.
The Hidden Valley change, if families wanted to get to a bus stop, what would the location of that be?
It would be moved to Hidden Valley Road and North Idaho Road, which is 1.6 miles away from where we turn around right now.
So these 24 families could go to that bus stop and still catch a bus?
Yeah, some of those families could go to the Hidden Valley and North Idaho stop. We would move the Hoyt Road, because we go all the way up to the top of Hoyt. We'd move that one to Hoyt and Church at that intersection, which is 1.7 miles away. Church Road, instead of going all the way up to Saddle Ridge, we'd stop at Stub, Wench and Church, which is 1.8 miles away. Smith Avenue, we haven't had any Twin Lakes Elementary students down that road for at least last school year. And we had a couple seniors there, so I don't foresee Smith Road being an issue and that one's only 0.7 miles away. And then the Village is 0.9 to the farthest spot, so.
Okay.
So if the board approves this, then you just notify the families right away so they can.
Yeah.
But they have to move down the road.
Bus stops, yep.
And, you know, there could be, you know, we might hear some concerns from,
Right.
you know, as one of you sort of pull back a service.
Almost certain.
But if we don't have the staff, we have to accommodate the best we can.
Are you fully staffed at this point for coming year?
No, we have two drivers in training right now, but they're not going to be ready for the start of school year.
If they come on, then are we fully staffed or?
Yeah, once they're trained and passed, then we should be able to fill all of our routes.
So do you start with a relief driver?
Yeah, our office staff.
Yeah, even right now, we don't have, all our relief drivers have become on routes. We do have some drivers who will, I think, right, just do trips.
Sports trips.
We have some who do sports, they don't want a route, they're not going to, you know, so that's their choice. So that does help us with the sports trips for sure, but they're not grabbing a regular route.
I don't have any other questions. Any further questions?
I'm good.
Okay, thank you both.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion on the bus routes at this time.
I will move to approve the bus routes as presented.
Second.
Having a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to the student handbooks for approval. I would like to say that thank you to those that put in the time and dedication to make these look as professional as they do and streamlined.
Pass that along. Dr. Pazley created the template. And the goal was to have all of the policies that pertain to our schools in one place. And then as part, as an overall Lakeland Joint School District student handbook. And then, um, as part, as an overall Lakeland Joint School District student handbook. And then each school has its own specific, uh, you know, bell schedules and little things that make their schools unique.
Right.
Um, but, uh, they did a really good job on this.
Everybody did a great job.
Yeah.
I do appreciate that. And I like the link to the, the, um, policies. So that way we don't have people saying different things and contradictory things and not updated things.
I feel like this is a really good, um, kind of mix of the conversation we had last year at the beginning of the year. And we were talking about, um, handbooks, there was, we liked the, that each school had their own flair in their handbooks, but we really wanted them to, there to be some consistency with the handbooks. And so I feel like Glenn was able to find, um, that, that sweet spot.
Yeah, they, they look fabulous. Um, we may wanna check on Twin Lakes, uh, for their recesses, cause it doesn't look like fourth grade ever gets a recess.
No, we don't let fourth grader sit recess.
I didn't think so, but we might just wanna clarify that.
Okay, I'll check with Tiffany.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion on the handbooks?
Does this contain all of the, uh, required parental notifications, or is that not definitely?
I believe that that was, um, part of the work at the policy committee, was making sure. And then Dr. Pasley and I went back to the document that showed all of the annual notices that parents need to have. And we cross-referenced together to make sure they're all linked into that.
So that's all in here?
It's all in there.
And this gets published on the website?
Well, I think Timberlake's, uh, book is, is short. So we may need to look at that.
Middle school or high school?
Uh, high school.
It's short.
Because there's, there's all, it gives you the title page, um, all the staff, mission, vision, objective, and bell schedule. And that's it. There's no policies, there's no, if this is their student handbook, there's no what Bob's talking about.
Aren't those embedded in the?
Those are in the...
Actual overriding the...
You're right. Yeah.
So the, the main handbook is the one that stays consistent. And then each school handbook is their own, whatever they might have going on at their school.
Right.
So what we had asked the, the principals was not to put all of these policies in their handbook because they're all here in the Lakeland Joint School District student handbook.
Okay, cause Lakeland's book is twelve pages.
I saw that, and they...
Okay.
So it's actually Lakeland's handbook that needs to be modified.
Okay.
Paired down.
Well, I mean, like, they identify their clubs and organizations. I don't think there's anything wrong with that.
No, but as far as policy...
But, yeah, they do identify some policies in here without linking the policies to them.
Right, and they don't need to do that because we were intentional about making sure that every policy were required to present to parents or that we use to run our schools is linked into the Lakeland Joint School District.
Let's see. Okay, alright.
Our handbook.
So the main handbook has all of the required policies that are identified for, for parenting out?
Yep.
Okay.
So I will ask, um, Mr. Hoffman if he could look at pairing that down.
Alrighty. Any further discussion on the student handbooks? Nope. Then I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Move to approve the student handbooks as presented with the Lakeland High School book. Hearing none, the...
Second.
Having a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Uh, moving on to the operation, the LJSD operation plan update. This is for the... This is the plan that we have to have in place due to, uh, COVID. I love the change.
The parents...
We just go green and that's it.
The parents came in, said we've had yellow and orange in there since 2021.
Right.
And we've never one time used anything but green, and they, they would, they just are really hoping that we're far enough away now that school can just be school. And so they asked to have all references to orange and red, or yellow and red.
Okay.
We removed.
I think that's great.
We did use only slightly, for about a week before school.
Before school started?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was prior to COVID though. I mean, that was pri- that was like...
Yeah, prior to this.
In the beginning, yeah.
But we didn't, we never had a single day of school in orange.
Right, correct.
The paragraph at the beginning on that first page, Lisa, has, um, 2021, 2022.
Oh, thank you. Fix that, makes a good catch. I always, I dislike it when we put the dates in, in the document, cause you have to really get that. This was due to the state board, the State Department, um, on the fifteenth. And, uh, I had emailed Lisa English, um, beginning of last week, letting her know that we want meeting until tonight, and asked her, do you want me to send the marked-up version to you? Or can we wait until the board makes a decision about how they want to move forward with this? And I can send it to you after our seventeenth board meeting. She never responded, so I sent the marked-up version to her, and I'll send the clean version.
Okay.
Uh, once, once the board approves the plan. Uh, we are required every six months to do this work until the spring twenty-four.
Okay.
I believe.
Well, hopefully...
No, twenty-three, spring of twenty-three. We have three more, three more times I have to bring it to.
Okay, perfect.
And then, uh, I think the only word change, other than striking things out, um, under green level of operation, standard precautions, where it says practice social distancing, it used to say only impossible and appropriate. And we cross that out and just said when necessary. So that was the only language change. Everything else was just a strikeout of yellow and red.
Well, we did take out aims to and just said will.
Oh, did I?
In the very first paragraph.
Yeah, we didn't wanna be wishy-washy.
Perfect. That's perfect.
I think the meeting took us about twenty minutes.
That's exciting.
I know. The parents were very happy with changes.
They're just like, that's pretty easy, it's crossing all...
It is.
Just get rid of it.
I do have one question, uh, for the board. On the, um, because we're taking out yellow and red, we felt like we could take out that whole chart at the bottom. Um, it didn't make any sense to leave just the green part because, um, we're not comparing it to anything else.
Right.
Uh, but if there's anything in there that you feel like we need to keep, I can make that change.
I don't see why we need to have the chart.
We didn't either.
Perfect. So do we need to have any further discussion?
Okay.
Then I'll entertain a motion at this time on the LJSD operation plan update.
Move that we approve the LJS... Operational Plan, uh, with the changes that we talked about.
Second.
Having a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Uh, moving on to the approval of student clubs.
So I, I noticed tonight when, uh, Roseanne and I were going through the, um, agenda, getting prepped for the board meeting, that, um, I prob- I should have, and so I'll go and I will go clean it up. But they, you can see at the top, um, six or seven new clubs for this year, or clubs that were in existence who didn't have their, um, application in. They should've gone, if you look at the bottom of that sheet, I have it tabbed for twenty-two, twenty-three.
Oh, gotcha.
So I should have put it there. Um, and I will do that, uh, and clean that up. Unless it is easier for you to just have a running record with the most current on top, I can, I can do this either way.
I don't mind a running record. It's kinda good to see them all in one place. Yeah, I suppose. I, I just hate the long running records of information.
But it does tell you what's actually happening in our buildings right now. So if you, I put it in tabs, you've gotta look at each tab to see what all the...
You could just divide the document, so like, split it so that, and then just have twenty-one, twenty-two, like, here below.
Oh, what was?
Yeah.
Like, freeze the frame, freeze it, send it.
Or just...
Yep, okay, I can...
Okay, just delineate, you know, put some differentiation between where the years end.
Okay.
But the running document would be fine then.
Okay.
Okay.
It's a thing.
You know, it's a legit thing. Do we need to have any further?
Anime club?
Uh, that's an art.
Isn't it, uh...
Oh, no, it's not.
It is, it's, it's an Asian art.
Yeah, it's the, the anime art. So they, the kids come together and, um, get to create together.
Isn't Pokemon anime, like?
I really don't.
Yeah, very early on.
Yeah.
Anime is, is gamers, it, it is a, um, cultural, uh, thing amongst some groups of kids, you know? But it is gaming and graphic art and hand art and they have, it's sort of like the gamer side of Comic-Con.
Yeah.
You know?
Okay.
Um, but it is, it is an Asian influence.
Very popular.
Yes, it is. Even among adults, there's a lot of adults that do a lot of anime.
And apparently it's been running for the past six years very successfully.
I see that. It was like, oh, well, we overlooked that, but that's okay. Yeah, but that's okay, we're, we're bringing it all out so that everybody knows, like, everybody knows. Any other questions, Paul?
I haven't broken out to the human rights one yet.
Oh, okay, no worries.
Not cooperating here.
I did find it interesting on the game club that, um... There's no anticipation for the activities. We don't know when the planet club's gonna meet. That information wasn't filmed. So, I, is this just kind of like a club that if there's interest will happen?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, what they're really trying to push is that, they're really encourage, trying to encourage every student to find an activity, a club, an athletic team that they connect with and to connect them to the school. And we had some kids who reached out to Mr. Viera, who loved to play games. And they just said it would be fun to be able to stay after school once a week and play games.
Okay.
He wrote that on their behalf.
So the Human Rights Club was last year in existence, but we didn't know about it?
Apparently.
Okie doke.
Yep.
So, is this an art club?
Well, it's being, uh, the supervisor is the art teacher.
Okay.
And, um, so it looks like they're really focusing on philanthropy and creating things that they can, um, use as a form of fundraiser so that then they can provide funds to people in need in the communities.
Okay.
Is how I'm reading that.
Yeah, that's kinda what I picked them on as well.
Sounds like the art club has been around for a while except for a recess for a year.
Oh.
We have a young live club.
I was, I was just gonna say, um, uh, Mr. Hoffman and I actually talked about this particular club today because, um, he asked me if it had, if I had knowledge of whether or not it had been before the board had approved. And so I let him know that that, that it hadn't. And so it is not going to be in, uh, meeting until they get their application in. So, but that is facilitated by, um, uh, Lake City?
Church?
Oh, okay. After school, and so, um, I just don't think they can, Mr. Derek connected with him.
Oh, gotcha.
When we were doing this, so Mr. Hoffman will, and that'll come.
Perfect. Any further questions? Okay, if there's no further questions, I'll entertain a motion at this time.
I would move that we approve the list of new, uh, school clubs as presented.
One second.
Having a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Hearing none, aye. Um, motion carries. We have the MOU for the University of Idaho Dual Credit.
So this is an annual document that has never come to the board before.
Really?
Um, so, uh, you're, so I'm bringing it to the board.
Thank you.
Uh, you're welcome. Uh, and it just lines out, uh, our relationship with you, the University of Idaho, for, uh, offering dual credit courses on our Lakeland High School campus. Um, Timberlake High School chooses to utilize a, uh, different university.
Okay.
So it's specific to Lakeland.
Um, the only thing that I have a slight issue with is number eight, the agreement and stipulation. Uh, it doesn't state who is doing this, the degree held, the degree awarded, the courses, or the name of the high school that this is being mapped. or the name of the high school that this is being mapped.
So, uh.
Because the FERPA rule specifically states it's, uh, subjective to number eight and who's identified in number eight.
The teacher. It's so, um, there, uh, did I not?
Can we?
There should be maybe, yeah, uh, or down.
Oh, there we are.
Can you, actually, can you keep going? I just wanna see if, I saw your eight, but I just wanna see if the back page, um.
I think you can add it because your sign, there's a signature page.
Yeah, so the signature page is where we put that information. So each, um, not that one.
Well, it's not on page three. Which pages were out?
Um, so the, the, each individual teacher has to sign this document and they have their, um, credentials on file with the University of Idaho. There's a, there's a process they have to go through to be allowed to teach. Um, NIC has the same process, so does NNU. Um, so once they're approved and they would have that on their files, uh, each teacher has, which is why I've signed it already.
Okay.
And then, um, as long as you approve it, then I will pro, provide, um, the original to Mr. Hoffman and he'll make copies because each teacher individually has to fill this out and send it back to you if I, that who is teaching for you if I.
Okay, so they, okay.
But as far as the, what course, they have to apply to be able to teach a particular course, they have to demonstrate that they have the content knowledge to do it and the degree cert and certification necessary. That's what that number is.
Okay. Do you have any questions on the MOU?
Looks good.
Yeah, I do know. Okay.
Good.
Thanks. I'll entertain a motion at this time.
That we approve the U of I MOU, uh, for dual credit as presented.
Sorry.
Hearing a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to the capital projects, um, we have the, excuse me, um. Okay, these are the needs that the principals have provided. The only struggle is, uh, I can guess what schools, but it doesn't identify the schools.
LMS.
Oh.
Tiny up in the right corner.
Thank you, 'cause one of them had a link and I figured out when I clicked the link that it was spare link.
The other, well, to your dead end items.
Okay. Do we know the costs associated with these repairs yet?
Um, Mr., some of them, Mr. Wallace may know because I think they might have been on, um, the list from Mr. Ferriola. This was, this is that principal list that you, uh, asked the principals to fill out.
Yeah, I mean, when we had that in the, you know, or trying to look at some of the things, some of it that are, um, you know, small, uh, you know, like paint the weight room, that's not gonna be, you know, overall a huge significant cost, honestly. But, you know, others, um, strip and repaint a gym floor, um, you know, address plumbing needs, that could be very extensive. Well, what we're talking about when we look at some of the, we were just trying to initially gather data.
Is some of this work ongoing, uh, Brian, or is this planned for later in the year or?
Uh, so I guess when I look at the first, like, it depend on the, like, the update outside of school depends on which school. I guess I don't know.
That's Lakeland Middle School.
Oh, this is Lakeland Middle School.
Yeah.
Um, electrical upgrades, no. Uh, the painting of the gym, no. Repainting the gym floor, I mean, we've, um, you know, re, you know, you did the, the annual summer service, but we didn't re, repaint it. Um, I mean, the floor is old enough, it, it, you know, at that point, if you, you really have to look, I don't know if there's enough wood to even really strip it one more time.
Yeah, it's, it's been redone, uh, several times.
Yeah, so it's, you know, at some point the wood gets so thin you just can't anymore. We may be there.
Um, we're not, we're not painting the inside of the gym this, this summer?
No. Um, and part of that was we did not have a paint crew. Every year since I've been here, um, we've had, um, you know, a crew. It varies from year, but anywhere can be from six to twelve that are hourly and, um, sometimes there are transportation staff, sometimes some, uh, nighttime custodians who are working during the summer. Sometimes you get some student, you know, maybe college student help. We had, our paint crew lead went to another position in Washington and we had no applicants. So we didn't have a crew this year.
We only had a fraction of our summer crew that we've typically had. So the work, they had, they really had to prioritize the summer, what work they were going to be able to accomplish. Labor is killing us. None, and a lot of these, remember, a lot of these things, um, we pushed the pause button on, on getting anything started because the board wanted to have, to have, at least participate in the conversation and make some decisions about what we were going to do. And we haven't done that yet, so this, that's why I'm asking to bring.
Well, the reason I ask, I, I'm reflecting back on one of our earlier meetings, I don't remember which one, the middle school principal was here. And, uh, the one priority request she had was to paint the inside of the gym. And I just feel like we need to honor that somehow or another, but.
Well, we had several, we actually had painting done at several buildings, but this, um, Mr. Ferriola provided the tools and the paint and then, um, staff came together and did the painting. So, uh, Mr. Hoffman and Mr. Neff were in their auxiliary gym just a day or two ago, painting. So, um, but, uh, the Lakeland Middle School team didn't have a paint group.
Who'd be called the party?
Could be a paint party.
Party?
Yep.
More people show up if you call it a party.
That's right. It's a work crew.
Yeah. Some of us like to paint and others avoided at all costs, so.
Any thought given to contract, uh, painting, uh, you know, I know it's more expensive and I don't like to do that, but, on the other hand, it was an item that was a priority and, you know, and we need to be responsive to priorities.
We didn't talk about contracting.
We didn't, we didn't contract any contractors for the gym, you know, gym, that gym job's probably, I don't know, twenty, twenty-five thousand.
Yeah.
If we contracted or?
That, that would be a guesstimate. Yeah, just a small painting that, uh, Mr. Hoffman wanted at the auxiliary gym, the quote was ten.
Was how much?
Ten thousand.
Oh.
And that wasn't, that was auxiliary gym and not.
They didn't paint the entire gym.
No, it's not, so, I mean, if you're doing the whole gym and, you know, up, all the way up to the, um, to the ceiling, that's, you know, getting the scaffolding and stuff like that, it's gonna be.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm just sorta guessing the price.
Probably contractors right now is, yeah.
For, for the contractor, we couldn't have contacted him in June and got any of that.
Yeah, yeah.
So we were sort of.
I mean, they might give you a price, but it's a gravy price. I mean, they would have to set something else aside in order to kind of do your.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're sort of at the, I mean, with the way contractors have been and, and, um, how busy they are locally and, and then also sometimes, you know, their jobs are delayed with the things that we're experiencing with orders and, um, you know, I started, and materials, you know, I, it's just a, it's a challenging timeline, you know, like, I just put in an order for the lunchroom tables that we talked about that Mr. Doyle had in the food service program and has the funds. And it's a big order. I couldn't get quotes for a while because the vendors said, well, we, they didn't wanna give me a firm quote because of their suppliers.
Material, material suppliers.
And I finally got it and they gave me a price and it's under the, uh, the Omni Purchase Cooperative, which we belong to. They, he actually beat a little bit 'cause it's a large order and you went, phew, I finally even able to move forward on something. It's not gonna be there day one. Um, but, you know, we have the old tables that have been working, but it's gonna be nice to get the new. But yeah, that's been happening there, so, you know, some of these things, you know, you know, our timeline will definitely be, if we're gonna do some fairly, you know, significant work or a job like that, you'd almost wanna be contacting the contractors, you know, around the holidays to try to get them in for the summer, on their summer list. Go from there and sign the contract and of course you might have a contingency clause on what their paint might cost or something, but.
So can we hire more maintenance staff?
Well, we've been trying.
Well, I, I think we, for full-time maintenance staff, um, we certainly could look, you know, forward, you know, to that, but we, you know, that's not in this year's budget. You know, I would say that, you know, Mr. Ferriola, if you needed new staff, it would be, you know, really probably someone with an HVAC and electrical background and maybe another grounds worker would be where his biggest needs are. If we were gonna go on that path, I certainly would wanna, um, look at our current staffing. And I haven't really looked at, um, super closely and are we, are we significantly lower than other districts? Are we higher than other districts, um, you know, as far as staffing? And I think we're about right there, but I, it would be good to, you know, sort of, are, where are we with sort of the, um, sort of what like post falls and quarter line proportionally you're doing with their square footage and grounds. Um, the other thing that, you know, we certainly would not wanna expand that department, um, I mean, right now until, you know, when the levy passes, that, that certainly, if that did not go, we would be reducing that department, not adding to.
Well, you just mentioned that the whole paint crew left and went somewhere else. I just assumed that they left, we, you know, if we can replace them or?
Oh, yeah, we tried.
Try to replace them.
Yeah, we posted the positions and we tried to hire, we just didn't have it. And, and so the paint crew, you know, they're, it's, um, you know, we, if we have a, uh, a nighttime custodian, they only work during the school year, they don't have, uh, they're like a teacher, they, they don't work the summer. And often they, they might be picking up, you know, other summer work or, you know, I'm not sure, but in the past, a lot of them, you know, like some of our bus drivers too, they would, um, take a look, say we're paying fifteen bucks an hour or whatever it was and say, I'll go work the summer for the district and pick up some, you know, a little bit extra money. And this year, we had no takers, you know, from our own staff.
Fast food and get, yeah, seventeen, nineteen. What most people don't realize though is a lot of times they're, they're part-time too, you know, they're like twenty hours, fifteen hours a week.
No, no benefits.
Right, yeah, no benefits, no anything.
Yeah.
Okay. I just wondering because a lot of this stuff, it's like, oh, if we had, um, the staff, you know, might be able to get some of this done without it, um, having to go to outside contracting, but.
Yeah, for sure, and we've done, um, that definitely has, has been in the past where they, you know, they have done a lot of work. They, you know, repainted almost all the inside classrooms last year at Lakeland Middle School with paint crew. You know, as they, as, uh, we did that with Ms. Murphy, you know, wanted to freshen up those classrooms and stuff like that. You know, the summer projects, we were able to get some of the carpeting projects done, some of those other things happened, so that was good, but.
Would it be possible, do you think, um, maybe over like Christmas vacation when our head custodians are working, that the building is empty to bring a few of them together? Could they paint Lakeland Middle School gym during Christmas vacation? Could they get that done?
I mean, you could, you know, talk with, um, talk with Mr. Ferriola. You know, I, I don't know if we have, yeah, to get that high up, I think you'd definitely be, um, you know, having the lift and, and the, and the equipment, even scaffolding, how that go. I mean, that's typically been a bigger project than our volunteer crews have done yet. But, you know, it's certainly.
But our custodians, our head custodians could maybe do it. I mean, not a volunteer crew, but.
Right, I'm just saying, I shouldn't say volunteer, I'm just saying people who aren't professional painters and that's getting up there.
Gotcha.
But, you know, if they're comfortable with it and thought that'd be good, I don't know, we just have to take a look.
Or we could contract now for Christmas, Christmas break, um, if that's something we choose to do. I'm a little concerned about approving these capitalist projects without even having any idea what they cost. Yeah, it's, I mean, even a guesstimate would be nice.
Yeah, I don't think we could approve just a cart launch list of.
Right.
How much is it gonna cost? Where is the money gonna come from and, yeah.
So we, I mean, we could work on, on trying to put some dollars with the, with the things that they've listed and then you could kind of decide based on the amount of money you are willing to use out of that capital fund project, um, for this year. And then the other part of the equation is, is can we get somebody to do the work, you know? So that's, that would be.
I mean, obviously that's something, that was something that's a big ticket, I have obviously added a new gym is.
Right, yeah, that's.
You know, you're, it's.
Um, can we talk a little bit about Lakeland High School track?
Yes, that is actually on the discussion item.
Yeah, because we got, we got a.
Yeah, I know it needs to.
Um, I just, just so everybody on, on the board is aware, I'm not sure if you are, but when we, uh, ran the first, when we increased the supplemental levy from the five point nine nine, or the five point three to the eight point nine nine, um, it was, um, told to our patrons that both Lakeland High School and Timberlake High School would get a new track. And the two activities directors at the time were asked to get quotes so that we knew how much that was going to cost. Well, they did that, but by the time we had the money and we were ready to move forward with it, it was double what they had been told. And so Lakeland High School felt like their track was in better shape than Timberlake High School's and so they, um, elected to forgo their track and give the money that should have gone to theirs to Timberlake, to resurface Timberlake's track. Uh, but we did promise the patrons that we were going to do that. And it's, um, the patching right now, there is, there's, it's so great.
Yeah.
That there's no really, there's really no saving of the track. And we won't be able to host meets on the track if we don't do something about it.
Right.
Is it the, uh, the rubberized surface or the asphalt that's?
The rubberized surface.
Oh, I think there could be.
Cracks.
There's cracks underneath, I see.
Oh.
Like big cracks in the asphalt.
I've just seen the foam, so there's a rubber.
We had some warranty work or insurance work done, there's some damage that was done by a snow removal contractor a couple of years ago. So there's about thirty-five, forty thousand dollars worth of patchwork that they did just on the surface. You know, some, actually replaced some sections. But I believe that, you know, there might, when you take that whole track off, you know, if you went to one of the track vendors, the ones out of Deer Park and stuff like that, they may, I mean, they may tell you that, you know, we're not gonna give you a warranty if you don't replace that asphalt. You don't know until you get into it. But if you have to replace asphalt, then this is a significant project.
Yeah.
It's, you know, the track itself is gonna be a couple hundred thousand dollars, easy. Just the, the rubberized surface, just the rubberized surface.
Well, we've received, um, we've had an outreach from the Booster Club for Lakeland that they're willing to help in some capacity, they want to see this get accomplished. So we do have some help. But I do think it needs to become like a priority given, i- if we can't host, we lose there as well.
Right, the other, the other reason I brought that up is because when we go out and ask patrons for money and we promise that we're going to do certain things with the money and now we have to go back out and ask again and we haven't done some of those things. And Brian really cautioned the former superintendent about being careful about how specific you are in your promises. It makes it hard for people to want to support a levy if they feel like, well, we gave you money and you didn't. and you didn't do the things you said you were gonna do with it. So this is one where we have community members who go out and they run on it. So they see what it looks like. We've got letters, or a letter. And so it's one of those things that are visual. There are, if Mr. Ferriola were standing here, I think he would probably have different priorities because the internal things in the buildings need fixed. But those are not things anybody else but he and his team see. Our patrons don't see that, but they definitely see some of these. So if we could prioritize at least a couple of those.
How much is left in the plant facility levy to come in?
We, you know, haven't, we're getting some of the bills right now, like the roof projects are finishing up. John Brown and Benny Kiefer is a big ticket item. I'll have to look and see what POs haven't come in, some of the big, some of the HVAC projects that weren't with the ester funds haven't come in delayed because of supply issues, the vendors can't get the materials. So I'll have to take a look and see what invoices come in and what we've paid and what we've encountered. Off the top of my head, I, I can't give you-
What was the estimate that was provided to the board, do you recall? Because you gave us a laundry list and there was X number of dollars in the block.
I can look real quick, um, even on my laptop. I thought that when all said and done is it was a hundred and seventy-five or two hundred, right around there. I mean, off the top of my head.
Under two hundred thousand.
Yeah, like one seventy-five, something like that, yeah.
So it would seem reasonable that especially if we have the ability to work with the Booster Club, respecting that they can't afford to do it all. If they're able to do even twenty thousand, twenty-five thousand, if we're able to take the remaining plant facility levy and do what we said we were going to do, that at least we are maintaining our integrity with our words to the constituents. Cause we said we were going to do it.
Right. So she had sent, I don't know if she sent this to everybody, the gal that reached out to us about the, the track. There were a couple of grants she was gonna try and apply for through various places. Dick's Sporting Goods, she said, helped, they helped up to twenty-five thousand, but they actually gave Jerome a hundred thousand. So she was gonna do that and then she attached, let me send this, did you guys all get this from it?
The letter that she wrote, the letters.
Yeah, with all the, and then she sent a-
The letter's actually on the board book.
Okay.
Down under the discussion item.
From Anna Hesel.
Oh, okay, okay.
Of the LJ.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna forward this to everybody just to make sure that, cause it was all like lumped, one big long email for me, so.
Yeah, her assumption is that resurfacing would be between a hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars. And replacement would be beyond that.
Yeah, and then they, she sent this, did I send this to everybody? I think so. Okay, I just forwarded that to you guys. Oh, did it send the whole email? I don't know. But there's a, from Sport Surfaces to the Lakeland Booster Club. And he tells everything that they, that they're proposing they can do. And then there's additional items that you can add. And theirs was a hundred and eighty-five thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars. Sorry, Roseanne, I missed you on this.
That's okay.
Let me send this to you. Okay. So everybody should have it now?
We don't, we don't have any firm numbers on, or any, any ballpark figures I should say as far as what this-
No, no one's asked me to get a folder number yet.
Dave, you're saying that there's issues with the asphalt?
It looks like it's-
Yeah, there's pictures in this, and she had sent us pictures. Yeah, there's big fissures through it with grass growing up through it and-
What I'm wondering is whether or not the, you know, the sections can be redone or if we're looking at wholesale replacement of asphalt.
Yeah, so it says they clean it, but there are pictures. Can you click those pictures?
They can pass the asphalt.
Uh, no, back where you were.
Sure they can pass the asphalt.
Yes, to the right, in the right gutter, or the left, I'm sorry, yeah, down. The pictures there. So there's some pictures right there.
That's along the hatch, yeah, that can be repaired.
Yep, so then, yeah. Then it just shows, those are all uneven surfaces with, go back up, Roseanne.
Where there's, see in the patches?
Yeah, she said those are all uneven, you know, so-
If there's heaves in the pavement and it's settled
Yeah.
and it's not level anymore, that's the problem.
Yeah.
Because you'll get water underneath there and it'll ruin it.
Right.
That's what I was wondering about.
It's more like, are there frost heaves regardless of what kind of surface you have now?
That's a quarter mile track.
I believe so, yes.
Irises used to cost a million dollars a month, so you can kind of figure that one out.
The optimum word there is used to.
Yeah, it would be a-
Well, that's about right, according to what they've got here, a hundred and eighty-five thousand plus the add-ons.
Yeah.
So you can get about-
Is that just for the rubber part?
Um, it's to clean, power blow the court as necessary.
Oh, you're looking at tennis.
No, this is for the track.
Oh, cause you said court.
Yeah, that's what they called it, blow court, power blow court, I don't know. Um, cut for a clean edge, patch the depressions that are greater than an eighth of an inch, grind down any ridges. Three eighths inch permeable polyurethane track system with base mat and UV coating, which would be the rubberized stuff. And then layout, restripe, paint. And then if you want everything else, then they have a laundry list of add-ons. I sent that to you too, you have that.
When did you receive this?
She sent it to, yeah, last, last month.
This document's dated July twentieth, twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, that's about when, she emailed the board.
Yeah.
I never remember.
Yeah.
Somehow I didn't see it.
And then I did reply to her because I didn't want it just to sit there with no reply.
Thank you.
You know, and then, and then, then she sent an email back and I, you know, I tried to keep everybody in the loop without getting into discussion, you know.
Well, obviously if we promised with the passage of the last supplemental to do this, there's some general fund money that's gotta be involved. Unfortunately. And we did associate a while back.
So maybe we also need to see if she was successful or if she's-
Did the, did the letter indicate how much the Booster's Club would be willing to toss in?
She is, the letter said that they were, she was going to apply for various grants because that's what I asked also, to have, you know, if it's five percent, seventy-five percent. And that's when she came back and said some are up to fifty-five percent of a proposed budget. Some would go up to twenty-five thousand, a hundred thousand. Yeah, so she was gonna apply for all those grants and then-
Those are all babies.
Right, correct, yeah. And she wasn't sure.
I thought maybe the Booster's Club had-
Yes, she does it.
You know, it's interesting, this, this replacement, replacement costs, the one time coming out here, two hundred thousand bucks, in that range. That was a total amount we spent for the development of that whole twelve acres, including the track and the lakes.
Times have changed.
Oh, times have changed.
She did say-
Just to put it in perspective.
Right, I hear you. Yeah. She did say in the first email that the reason she reached out to the board is because most of the grants that she wants to apply for are asking how much is budgeted for the project. So they probably, they must go, you know, we say, all right, two hundred and fifty thousand and they get a hundred thousand or-
Well, yeah, some of them go up to fifty-five percent or whatever of budget.
So they need to know what the total-
They need to know what the budget is before they can-
So what are we talking about for a timeline here?
That's what I was just wondering. Because if we put this off too long, it may, we may get to the point where we can't get it done before track season starts.
I, I would be surprised if we could, if we can do it before the winter. I mean, if we started doing an RFP, I mean, this is enough money, you're gonna have to go to bid. Work, right, if we started that, I mean, we'd get bids in October and they're not gonna do work during the winter.
However, if we can specify-
You can do it in pieces. You can do the asphalt work separately from what's the track surface.
Yeah, I mean, I still think we'd wanna do, I mean, I saw that quote, I haven't seen it yet. The information's in, I'm gonna share it, but it looked like it was a vendor from Florida. You know, it looked like, so I mean, I, I think we'd wanna, yeah, from West Palm Beach, Florida, so I'm not sure what their local presence is. We certainly would want to reach out to the, to the vendors here that specialize in Northwest tracks. So, I mean, and I, usually, you know, this work is typical is, you know, done in, you know, if it's a new track or if you're gonna resurface it, you know, it's done in the summer.
I guess my, 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 my thing is we have someone who is willing to take the lead, to do the legwork, to make some movement, to help out in capacities such as grants, such as all this. If we could determine, we are willing to just say, fine, you solve it, you, you figure it out and we will allocate a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the remaining plant facility money levy, since we don't have a solid figure, just to get the ball moving. I, I think that is huge in showing a good faith effort that we're listening, we realize it needs to be accomplished, and yeah, we're behind the eight ball, but someone's willing to take the lead on this.
Yeah, we inherited that. And can I interrupt you for just a sec? Because she did say in the other email, her husband who works at a local engineering firm has also reached out and there is the track doctor in Boise, which they've also asked for quotes. So I don't know if they've gotten anything back from them or not.
Would it be appropriate for Brian and I to, to request a meeting with Katie and other members of the Booster Club to, to find out what the quotes are?
Yeah.
Figure out like, how much money are we actually talking, who can do the work? And then have that information presented at the September board meeting so that we have a better idea what the total cost is because, and then what, what, what is the Booster Club prepared to, to help with, if anything, outside of the grants? Because we, we may have to decide that we're gonna, this is how much we're, it's gonna cost us, so we're gonna set that aside out of, out of the general fund or wherever. And then as the grants come in, it offsets what we've set aside. But I think we have to determine what the board's willing to spend on it. And, and I don't know, Brian's talking RFP, but at least if we can get some kind of ideas, quotes from different companies, we can at least get the ball. I agree with you, we need to get the ball started.
Yes.
And I think we can meet with them and have those conversations and then come to September meeting with some information to at least get us started.
I think that's great, great plan.
So I hear you're saying, you know, there's concern about utilizing the track for, for meets or whatever. Is it, in whose judgment is it usable for another year? In other words, we're late in the season, as Brian explained. Love to have it done before winter and the snow flies, but I just looked at the long-range forecast for September, it's gonna rain like mad if it holds true. So in fact, we probably can't get it done this year. But we can make a commitment to have it done then.
Right. I will verify with Mr. Neff, but I believe that we, I think he was talked to by somebody from IHSAA saying that our track is not in any kind of shape to hold meets.
This should have been dealt with last year.
I thought somebody, I heard somebody say that we have a year to two.
I'll, I'll double check with Mr. Neff. I just know that we have been put on notice, but I'll find out the timeline and we can do that when we meet.
But I think it's important to show the community and the Booster Club that, you know, you can bring your complaints, your concerns, your, you know, and we did- Yes, we did make the commitment and we have not upheld that end of the bargain.
Well, from that standpoint, we need to make that commitment and, and make it well-known, even if we can't get the work done this fall.
Correct.
Because in the spring, we're gonna go handout.
I know.
And so you better be able to say, you know, we, we made the commitment to do that and we're gonna do it. Timing was difficult and so on and so forth.
True, but she's asking for some form of a commitment just so that she can go find more money.
Yeah.
And I think that is commendable to have someone be willing to take that on.
I, I think what Lisa said is correct. I mean, we can, we can commit a sum of money and if in the end, you know, some grant money comes in, it offsets a portion of that, then the district doesn't have to spend it, obviously.
Correct.
But it's, initially, it's our commitment to get it done.
Right, yes.
And we've gotta put forth, you know, enough funds to make that happen.
So we could meet with the Booster Club and talk about the, the quotes that they have gotten. Could we, as an action item tonight, direct CFO Wallace to prepare the RFP so that we can get that going because we can't just take the quotes as, as they are. We have to go through the RFP process.
I mean, we can certainly get-
Get that started.
You know, some of the people that are in the Northwest, there's some Spokane and Montana firms. Sure they'd come out and say, if I had to do this right now, they'd give you a, a fairly good estimate. It wouldn't be rock solid. I mean, as far as we're signing a contract, but they would say, if I had to rip this all out and just do this, just resurface, this would be our price right now. If, if we had to replace asphalt, then add X to give us, you know, is their price, you know, around that two hundred thousand dollars would be my guess. I mean, when we did Timberlake High School just a year, year and a half ago, a couple of years ago? Maybe three, time goes by fast. I mean, it was one fifty. So for Timberlake High School is one fifty, so we know how much it cost three years ago.
Right.
So it's usually gonna be two hundred or more now. The question is, is how much more additional work of, of really the under, of, of the asphalt? And if you had to, you know, do significant work there, then certainly you're looking at possibly doubling the, the cost.
Well, we have to do something, so we have to start movement forward to get this resolved and to hold up our end to the community and to stay in connection or collaboration with the Booster Club. And, and letting, changing the perception that we are taking everything as seriously as we say we are.
So let's get serious, is that what you're saying?
Let's get serious.
There was concern.
Yes.
I would, I would move that we commit up to a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for this project and that we instruct the district administration to seek RFPs or, and or contract negotiations and to meet with representatives from the Booster's Club to see what commitment is available from them.
I'll second that. Having a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.
We have marching orders.
All right.
Thank you.
So at Monday night's board workshop, we talked about some safety issues also, especially pertaining to the doors.
Yes.
Uh, Lakeland Middle School replacing the doors, knowing now what we know about Uvalde. Adding the access codes for two more doors to make sure the building, the exterior building is secure. And then there was a question about cameras, so I have just some numbers for you, and I will forward this to Rosanna so she can share it to the full board, but a four-lens camera, which is, which can see multidirectional and covers a lot of ground, is sixteen hundred dollars. A single lens camera is about a hundred and eighty.
Okay.
And then if we needed to buy a server to add, because we're adding cameras, they're about forty-six hundred dollars. And then licensing is twenty-two hundred, so I'll share this with you, but that kinda gives you, we can work from that.
When you share that with us, can you also identify what schools need what with respect to cameras and what, like, are other places that need cameras that don't have them currently? So we can kinda get a-
Airbus shirt?
I'm trying not to say that.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry.
discreetly. It's okay.
Um, okay, so we need a plan for how many cameras we would actually need.
Yeah, I noticed also on that list, on Capital Projects list, a lot of the principals also mentioned having those key cards at the doors that go out to the playgrounds or wherever. I don't know how many of those we need.
I think, yeah, when Brian brought that initial list, and I had the hundred and fifty thousand dollar line item on there, his, when I chatted with him, his thinking was, for elementary was one door on all four sides of the building, or southeast, west. And then a few at the more, at the secondary schools, depending on which doors kids are using.
Well, though, all the elementary doors, the front door have the-
Every building has this.
Okay.
Lakeland High School's getting their second one, so that'll be, they'll be good to go. So, yes, they all have one. But we don't have any on the-
Okay.
So we're adding three to each elementary school.
Okay.
And then there were some at each of the secondary schools.
Okay.
For that hundred and fifty thousand. So for September fifteenth, I will bring to the board how many, how many cameras at each school, and then what kind of camera that would be and the cost associated with it.
Please.
Okay. I'm gonna put Mr. Gallion to work.
And is there a way we can move forward with replacing the exterior doors at the junior high that I know I have been asking to have for two years? I mean, we, we keep bringing it up and talking about it, and everybody knows it needs to be done, but nothing is ever done about it.
I was, that we replace the doors at the junior high. How's that?
I'll second it.
All right, hearing a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.
Replace those doors.
I guess we're replacing doors.
Thank you.
And though that, that money would come from that Capital Projects set aside? Because that could be a significant cost, depending on what we find when we start tearing the doors out, right?
Yeah, I mean, there's, some doors would be more simple than others. And the front door is tied to that whole window system at the middle school, so you might have to rip out that whole wall. I, I don't know.
I hear you, but we keep bringing it forward, and we keep being told, well, it could be, it could be, it could be, and there is no movement, and those doors are not getting better.
Are those doors required?
They're the front doors.
Well, we don't wanna have a problem.
No, no, I'm just saying, is it, I thought it was a back or side door?
They are the back, no, the back doors are required.
Their back main door?
The, on the, on the junior high, the back doors are the ones who that were-
Well, those were just unlocked.
Yeah, well, and they were welded by like every shop class that ever attended there. And they were wretched.
That's not front doors.
The front doors have been welded also, yeah.
Yeah, they all have, but the back doors are-
Okay, okay.
I think the back door is the one I saw.
Yeah. Yeah.
So we could work on getting some quotes on what that work is gonna cost and, and bring the cost back to the board to determine where, where that money's coming from.
That would be perfect, okay.
Hey, you know what else we need to update on is the S or dollars, what we've spent and where it went and what's left, and, I mean, whatever we turned into the state or whoever we report back, all that too.
Yeah, we can do that. I mean, we're, you know, sort of in the middle of preparing our, our audit and our financials and the accruals and all that right now.
Yeah.
Probably that best information as far as what we had up to June thirtieth, because we haven't really done a whole lot in July with S or spending so far.
Okay.
Would, you know, we can catch up the board on that with, you know, either in October or after the audit. We'd have the most accurate information for you.
Okay.
I'm curious, uh, Marianne, what's the, what's the timeline on the flow of the S or three money?
We have two more years. We have this year and next year to, to claim. You, we could spend it all in this year, you know, if we did claims, but it's-
The reason I ask that is there's a lot of noise in Congress right now about schools have not utilized that money. And if, if, if that continues, they will take the money back and reallocate it for something else.
Yeah, I just read a article on that.
My thought is, maybe we oughta get our hands on it as quickly as possible.
And things aren't gonna get any cheaper over the next year anyway, so.
And in order for us, if we were really gonna just go to the, for the S or three dollars, which is the, the bulk of what is left, and that's significant, we haven't, I haven't made a claim on an S or three yet. So we've just done S or one and S or two. And we would need to just shift salaries
Doesn't say pay salaries out of that.
To, to that, and it would, then, we, you know, we'd be building fund balance in the general fund.
And am I correct that the S or three money is not quite as restricted as the previous ones?
It allowed, it, there's some more restrictions. You could do all the same uses of S or one, S or two. And so they're all supposed to be, you know, related to the pandemic, so, and, and especially learning loss. S or three had the set amount that you had to dedicate towards learning loss. So for example, a perfect purchase for that is if we did, you know, another curriculum adoption. I mean, that dovetails right into the learning loss, you're buying curriculum, and then you satisfy that requirement. If you tie staff to the learning loss piece, you know, they may ask for documentation, you know, as an intervention teacher or things like that. If you tie staff and don't do it to the learning loss and said, well, you know, we were maintaining operations, it was, you know, technology staff helping maintain, you know, custodial staff that were doing cleaning, all those are, you know, dovetail within their grant requirements, and we'd be okay.
Our nurses and our counselors.
Nurses, counselors, yeah, you know, just even regular teachers. I've been avoiding putting any federal special education, or any special education costs on S or, so we maintain our maintenance of effort. You know, just on that, that sort of crazy requirement with the special education. So, you know, but, you know, certainly some districts have done that. I've talked to, you know, some of my colleagues. Some have sort of done what we did. Sort of, you know, did the S or one, S or two, and have sort of staged it out by year. Others have probably claimed it all, and there's some, as you mentioned, who are behind the eight ball, and they haven't claimed, you know, they're, for whatever reason, they, they weren't making the claims, or saving it for something. And, and that, maybe that's what we're speaking to. We're probably in about the middle of what people have been doing around the state.
So was our S or five, like, five million or something? Or S or three?
S or three is right around five, with like one point eight of it needing to be the learning loss.
Could potentially be three curriculums.
That's what I was just going to ask. Could we, could we run an adoption cycle this year for science and for ELA?
I have no problem with that.
Get that dialed in? If we're worried that we're gonna lose those dollars, and that's something we could do.
Well, I heard something the other day, and one of the, well, it's Tim Scott, who was, who was saying it, you're familiar with him, Senator. He was saying something like eighty percent of the extra dollars have not been spent by schools, and as a member of Congress, he and others are saying, if they don't need it, let's pull that money back and reallocate it to something else. So there is, there is discussion of that.
Well, we need it, so.
And so.
Yeah, don't leave anybody on the table when we're talking about-
Yeah, well, we, I don't think we left eighty percent on the table.
No, but I'm talking about nationwide.
And there, there could be some large systems out there that have done-
Yeah, and that's probably what it is, but, you know, they'll use that as an excuse to alter the situation.
So if we could do two big curriculum adoptions this year, and then maybe some staff, we could use, we could then take the money we had allocated for, for staff salaries and use that for some of these kinds of things.
One-time expenses that we need to-
Yeah, but between this year, or at least this year and next year, I think we probably should.
Consider, yeah, we wanna just-
If we were gonna accelerate it, it would be, you know, from a reporting standpoint, stuff like that, the reporting requirements are quite extensive. You know, if we didn't go into the next fiscal year, then that sort of helps you on the reporting side. Just from that, from a work's point of view. Yeah, it's just, you know, it's federal program, it's just a lot figured out on your own.
Well, it sounds like we got a lot of stuff to look at and figure out how we're gonna maneuver it all. Yeah. So that we can get done what we need to get done, right, not get ourselves in, be able to maintain going forward too, you know?
Well, these are good funds that we can do some catch-up, you know, where, where stuff wasn't being done before curriculum and, you know, facility upkeep and, and stuff to put that back in. There's the one-time expenses that we, we can use to, to play catch-up right now.
Yeah.
Without having to go into the pockets of taxpayers too.
Yes.
So.
Thank you. I don't have any more questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
So with the remaining Capital Projects, it's my understanding we'll just table that until September? With the, I mean, we have marching orders from there, but then, in its entirety.
Yeah, so do you want to wait on the key card access doors to make a decision about that until we get all of, would you rather wait till we have all the information, you can have the big picture of whatever things costing and where the money's gonna go?
I don't think so, because I think that that's something that we do now.
Yeah.
That's something we know that we absolutely want to do.
Right.
No matter what.
Right.
So I would say-
I would appreciate the get started.
Move forward with that piece.
Definitely.
And, yeah, the sooner the better, so, and, you know, everything is taking so much longer right now, so.
The ball has to start moving.
So do you want to make a motion? Make that an action?
I move that we table the Capital Projects beyond what we've already talked about.
Yes.
Until the September regular meeting. And to get the ball rolling and start moving forward with the key card. Door access.
I'll second that.
I, I have a point of clarification. So we said just a few minutes ago, to get all the cost and bring the cost to us for the cameras and all that, are, are we still doing that, or we're just, okay?
Yeah, all, yeah, that's, yeah, that's a part of what we've-
Yeah, and she's still-
Individualized marching orders for, for those other items, yeah.
And she, you are still bringing forward how many keyless little bobbies we need.
Yep.
But we are saying we're moving forward with
Okay.
the keyless entry.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, welcome. So I seconded the motion. Hearing a motion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to the athletic coach evaluation tool. I really like this tool. I think you guys did-
I had you in the back of my mind as we were working.
Thank you. I think you guys did a fabulous job on it. It's very clean, very intentional, very direct.
And more about the student athletes and less about the equipment.
Yeah. Your opinion, Dave?
Looks all right to me.
That's a thumbs up. I'll take it. Do you have any input on it, Dave? Coming from a coach's perspective?
Looks all right to me.
Okay. Any further comments or discussion on the tool?
Looks good.
Yeah, I think it's great.
The, um, I will take this to the association, because they have not seen it yet.
Okay.
Um, and if they have any little tweaks, I'll bring it back for an update to the board, but I would prefer to come with the approved.
Okay. With that in mind, I'll entertain a motion on the athletic coach evaluation tool.
I'll move that we approve the coaches' athletic evaluation form, adding the page numbers and page range to the footer.
Good catch.
Second.
Having a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. And moving on to discussion items, we have the continuous improvement plan.
So if you open the metrics page in that folder.
I discovered that the metrics showed, because I was looking for like the SIP. So I, I, I see the comparative numbers.
Yes, so each of those pieces are part of our SIP plan. Some of them are last year's, they're all in the, for the working documents, but the, the column L, uh, we added so that you could see what our actual performance is, because the thing about this plan that makes no sense to me is that we set targets, but at no point do we ever put in here how we actually did in trying to meet those targets.
Right.
So, so this, we put those in there just to give the board an idea of where we actually were, because we have to set the twenty-two, twenty-three targets. And instead of just shooting in the dark, we wanted to provide that information.
Well, and so Bob and Dave know, last year, when the SIP plan was brought to us with the markers for last year, we just universally, the board suggested to universally do an increase of three percent. So when you look at what the twenty-one, twenty-two performance targets are, know that we were doing a three percent increase from the prior year, so when you look at what our actuals were, if you go down- So when you look at what our actuals were, if you go down three percent, you'll know what we were the year before. Does that make sense?
Okay. So the first, that bluish, purplish box, the first one, that whole tool right there, that's just middle school. And, um, as a state, our middle school numbers are really, really low. And so, uh, this will be a focus area for our legislators and state board.
Okay.
Uh, this year, they're very concerned about math at the middle level, statewide. Yeah, what's hard with these numbers is, uh, when you look at what our kids can do with math, they can, they can perform in the classroom. So there's a, there, we're struggling as a state with the disconnect between what they, what they're showing and what they're doing here. And I think the difference is the level of rigor that we're expecting in our classrooms. We haven't shifted from what we used to require with the old standards. We ne, we did not make that rigor shift. So the I-reading math program is supposed to be able to help us with that.
Okay.
But there are no bright spots in the state for this. Nobody's got it figured out.
So much happened at the same time. I mean, the standards happen, the way, I mean, the way everything was done and the testing and.
And the teachers can't see the test, that's the other part, that's really hard.
Yeah, and if, if you have the whole state in the same bucket, you can't tell me that the whole state just has inefficient teachers. I mean, that's.
Right, no, it's a curriculum issue for sure, an alignment issue with the assessment.
Yeah.
I finally had gotten Carlin Laraway to agree that that was the case after three years of working with her. And then she went and was going home. And so I'll start the conversation again once the new state superintendent is in place and we know who the person for assessment's going to be because they're all fleeing right now.
Right.
But we do have to come up with some performance targets. We got close on the sixth grade E L A I set. And we're kind of close sadly for, for sixth grade math. Scores are just not great. There's also no way to figure out what percentage of students made adequate growth because there's no report on the I set that tells us that. So we have just said, well, if we're gonna expect fifty-four percent of our kids to be proficient, we would expect that those fifty-four percent are making adequate growth. So we just always kind of have the two numbers be the same because we have no way to tell. There's no report, there's no way to know whether kids made adequate growth or not on this tool.
Yeah, you can only test them so much before you burn them out. If they're taking a test on everything all the time because we're trying to make up for what another required test lacks.
Right.
You know?
And then if you're doing that, you're not teaching.
Right, right. And then they're just clicking and checking and doing whatever just to be done with it.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah.
The other thing that's challenging at the middle level is, you know, back in the, um, when the I set was actually realistic and doable based on what we were teaching kids. And historically Lakeland had ninety-plus percent of our kids proficient. There was an expectation at every grade level that we tested, if you weren't proficient on your I set, we had to have a conversation about whether you were moving on to the next grade.
Right.
Because there was definitely correlation between what we taught and their performance on the assessment. And so there was, there were teeth, there were some teeth to the, to the test. So kids actually put the effort in. It also didn't take them five hours to do a test, it was an hour and a half.
Yeah.
So there are, there just are some testing, it's just not, it's not great for kids. I mean, when you have eight-year-olds who have to spend two full days of school to take one of their four tests, it's just, that to me is educational malpractice.
I'm curious, uh, on our I O State Department of Education report card, why it states that our twenty-one enrollment was forty-three, fifty-nine when we were at, uh, an enrollment of forty-six, sixty-one?
I think that might be the twenty-one, twenty, twenty-one school year when we were down two hundred kids.
Um, I don't know.
Forty-three, weren't we about forty-three hundred that year?
Because based on what they're stating, this would have been the carryover because they're, they're doing nineteen, twenty, and then twenty-one.
Yes, so that would have been spring of twenty-one, which would have been a year ago.
Okay.
And that, that would be accurate, that's how we had, remember we had that big drop in enrollment?
Right, we did. But I must be not understanding your information that they're providing then.
The other thing that was, um, interesting, I'm not sure where, you know, because trustee Grissom forwarded to me some Idaho Freedom Foundation information and it's kind of a report card on our district. And they have our, our, our I R I scores really low.
Yeah, that's the bad thing about the, all these numbers. If you look at the state numbers, if you look at federal numbers, if, none of the numbers will ever match. Whether it's a test score, enrollment, ADA, how many teachers we are, who's getting paid what. I have never found anywhere you could reconcile and go, oh, look, those numbers are all the same. You know, because they just, they, they never, yeah, and I don't know where they pulled, I, those look like state numbers to me when I looked at those.
They were low. I looked at them, I thought, oh, my gosh, we are definitely not that low.
Yeah, um.
Right, right.
But yeah, everybody pulls all these numbers and then, you know, how, I don't know where they're getting from. I did not contact them, but I was going to shoot them a email from just citizen perspective to, maybe they should contact the district or the board before they, you know, they need to vet their own information or use another thing.
We're still waiting on our four-year cohort graduation rate from last spring. We don't have that yet from the state.
Okay.
So would you like to do what we did last year and just increase by three to five percent, whatever you're looking at, over what our actual performance was? And have that as our target, or how would you like to do that?
I think we increased three percent over the higher, the higher of the two, between whether it was our performance target last year or our actual performance from last year. The higher of the two.
Okay, so for like the math, eighth grade math, I said our target would be forty-three percent. So we would need to grow seven percent from what we were this last year.
Yeah, that might be a little much. I think we just need to go three percent over what our actuals.
Yeah, and base it off of our actuals.
Yeah, I want to make it.
I'm good with that, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's gotta be something we can achieve in a reasonable, I mean, we've got so much to, uh, improve within our district. And I think as long as we start putting the tools in teachers' hands and not making it, you know, mountains that they can't climb, yeah, I think that would be.
Attainable goals, yes.
Yes. I mean, I'm sure there are teachers that would rise to the occasion of a seven percent growth. But I'd like to know that we are consistently improving.
Right, well, and you have, um, now, these scores though include the, every student though, right? So the other thing is, is we have to keep in mind our student population, especially some of those lower. I don't know what the middle grades are, how many, um, like kids with extra services or, you know, I know that population seems to be growing as time goes on everywhere.
Absolutely, yeah.
You know? So, yeah, I'd hate to put the pressure on the teacher and then the teachers are trying to deal with these students that need other things too. Yeah, it is frustrating, they don't even know what you do about it.
The thing is confusing to me, and these are not cohort numbers. I mean, you test that group of students in the second grade this year and they score at X.
Right.
And then you create a target for next year, but that's not the same kid. It's gonna be this group of kids that are moving into second grade.
Right, right.
Anybody who's been teaching very long knows that you're gonna have ups and downs from year to year.
Yeah, you're gonna have it.
And different groups of kids. So, you know, it's just like playing games with all these numbers.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, they don't really, uh, you're exactly right, nothing, you, you're not really measuring anything except that class of students at that time.
Snapshot.
One snapshot.
Right.
But then you're gonna apply that snapshot to the next group of kids, which.
Right.
Now, for the, what you're looking at, you know, I guess it is a, hoping that the teachers will continue to do better. I mean, if, if that class that year didn't do great, then hopefully maybe they're looking at some other options and some.
Of the instruction and, yeah. We could, in the literacy in the yellow boxes, to Bob's point.
Do that.
Percent of our kindergartners who were proficient, we said sixty-nine, we actually scored seventy-six. We could make seventy-nine percent the performance target for first grade.
Right. And then I would say for kindergarten.
Move it all ourself, just.
And then, so then second grade.
Cohort.
Yeah, so then second grade and first graders only score at sixty-four percent. So it'd be sixty-seven, which is way low for that, they should be much higher than that. Um, and then we'd go to eighty for second, or for third. Um, and then now we're not even comparing, now it's I R I going to I set. They're two totally separate for fourth grade. So we said fifty-five percent and our fourth graders actually were at sixty.
Yeah, that's great.
Better than, so.
At least we picked a number. Before it was just, there was no, nothing, it was just.
Shots in the dark.
But we had seventy-five percent of our third graders proficient on the I R I. I know it's a totally different assessment. But that's higher than what we were the year before in third grade. So if we said we were gonna be at sixty-three, sixty-four, sixty-five for fourth grade, then we could be in the ballpark there, just looking at the I R I proficiency rates.
I don't really understand what they think they're gonna, what they're looking for. I don't know what this is supposed to, you know, I don't know what the end goal is. It's really hard to meet the expectation if you don't know what the expectation is.
This is a group of people who really just wanted some way to see how our schools are doing, but it, but it, they didn't.
They don't understand what they're doing.
Yeah, this is the wrong data.
Legislators who don't, aren't putting it together and they don't know how to ask the right questions.
They give lip service to, let's see, let's see school improvement. And so, how do you measure that? Well, let's put some numbers here, use that to measure.
Right. Well, it would seem reasonable that if the prior fourth grade hit the benchmark of sixty percent, the new fourth grade should be able to hit the benchmark of sixty-three, given that they're coming in seventy-five percent on a different test.
Right, that's what I agree.
And then I would say for the kindergarten spring I R I, knowing that they were at seventy-six percent, it would seem reasonable to benchmark it at seventy-five percent or.
For the new kiddos.
For the new kiddos. I mean, or we could feasibly drop that number to seventy-two because you don't know what you're getting with the little people that are coming in. They're brand new, so you don't know how they're gonna respond or react. So I don't want to set the bar super high, but if we.
They did awesome.
If they did phenomenal, so I would hope that that would be a consistent trend year after year after year.
That was seventy-six percent as a district with two grade, two buildings being significantly lower than the rest of the building. So if we can get those two buildings.
Up.
Up. Because we had one building in the ninety percent, so we had, the others were in the eighties.
See, that's far more important information.
Yes, it is. Oh, yes, it is.
Yeah. So, so I would say our target should stay around where we were this year because knowing.
At sixty-nine percent?
No, at seventy-six.
Oh, okay.
What we actually.
What we actually hit, knowing that, that we had two schools who struggled.
Okay.
Um, because if we can bring them up, it should go, it, it should go up because the rest have been pretty consistent, so. Okay, um. These are our cho, our chosen targets. So, uh, we did correct, um, we're not using already E L A, which is why there's an N A there. Uh, we need to put in the adequate growth for twenty-one, twenty-two. But, um, so in kindergarten, it's correct letter sounds per minute, and we had ninety-four percent of our kids meet the benchmark this year. So. What do you want our target to be? I would say it needs to be ninety percent or higher.
That's, yeah, I, I think it would be fair to drop it to ninety percent.
So correct words per minute for first grade was sixty-one percent. Um, but we found that a lot of our teachers were not intentionally teaching to that because of the I station. So they will be this year, I would anticipate that will go up. But, so we could add maybe three percent to that, just see how we come in next year. I think it could kind of significantly higher, but. And the second grade was at seventy percent, so we could maybe increase that by three.
Well, if second grade were to be the sixty-one percent.
That's right. Yeah, we can't do the, we can't do the same for like kindergarten to first grade because you're going from letter sound fluency to actually reading fluency, which is a totally different measure. But, so second grade.
From first to second grade.
We could go, so we could go to sixty-four.
Yeah.
Okay. And then third grade would be seventy-three.
Way up.
Okay.
Which is gonna take some work, just knowing where, you know, where they were.
And third graders going into fourth, that's a little concerning.
Yeah.
Yeah. Again, it was, they just didn't intentionally attach to it, so we will do better. Um, so on the next one, the career and college readiness, um, Coeur d'Alene Postpals and Lake Pont de Ray have a percent of senior students who completed the FAFSA and a percent of juniors and seniors who took dual-credit or A P courses. So I will work to get those data points if you're, if that's what you want to go with for this year.
Yeah, I still wish that there was. I don't know, better numbers, but yeah, that's.
And, and those I think are, those are the two we had last year.
Yeah. Actually, I think we only had one.
Did we just have the FAFSA?
Yeah, we just only did FAFSA.
We only have to have one, so if you only want to do one, we can do that.
No, I like the idea of doing the A P courses because it does show that we're.
I would much rather just do the juniors and seniors for dual credits and remove the FAFSA.
The FAFSA one's hard for me because it's not really the kids who are doing the FAFSA. And it's not the counselors doing the FAFSA, it's the parents. Um, they are providing opportunities for parents to come and get help and they are reminding parents, but it's the parents. So in my mind, that's not an actual.
I just hate that FAFSA one, but we don't, I mean, I'm, I'm fine, I don't care.
I would say we remove it.
Yeah, I'm good with removing it because it is mainly the parents. And even if it wasn't mainly the parents, it is totally relying upon the parents to produce the information for the kid to even, for the student to be able to fill any of it out, so.
And the, and the career counselors are not, while they're, they might be helping if an individual student comes in, they're not actually sitting down with every single student and making sure that they've got it complete. That's not happening. Okay. And then I just basically use the same narrative that we had last year and updated ours.
Okay.
And your dates are already, I'll update it if I should be able to get through it.
Do we need any further discussion of the SIP plan?
I don't think discussion will lead back to...
Okay, can we move on in the discussion items? Okay, so we did already discuss the status of the high school track. The dyslexia update is simply that Dr. Pasley's providing the State Department and Idaho Comprehensive Literacy Plan as resources regarding House Bill seven thirty-one. One of the things with respect to the DIBELS, she, Dr. Pasley was trying to find out what type of diagnostic tool are we gonna be using? And the lean-to, it's my understanding, the lean-to is DIBELS. So if we already get it implemented and start circling the, you know, we're, we're ahead of the game, instead of trying to play catch-up and figure it out.
Because the state doesn't have all their ducks in a room yet, they don't have...
You're gonna do this?
Yeah.
We haven't decided how yet.
When you go to the, when you go to the resource section under this and you click on things, it just says, "Coming soon." Coming soon.
Okay, well, we'll start soon.
Good news, though, with this dyslexia, so September twenty-ninth and thirtieth are the two professional development, state professional development days. On Friday, September thirtieth, Dr. Sally Brown is coming in. Every time I say her name, I think, oh, I'm thinking of Charlie.
Charlie's sister.
Charlie's sister Sally's coming. And she's a guru when it comes to dyslexia, and so she's going to, we're going to take our elementary staff and from eight to eleven, she'll work with our K-two teachers and at the same time, the third through fifth grade teachers are working with Dr. Ann Ellsworth from the University of Montana on how to teach children how to write. And then they'll flip-flop, so it's gonna be a full day of really good ELA professional development. So we're, we are starting, we're trying to kinda get ahead of the curve on this dyslexia thing. But Lynn really wanted for the principals and for the board to lay out all of the requirements that are coming our way and just so everybody's on the same page with what we're gonna have to do. So that's why she did that.
And it would be proactive on getting, yes, professional development training. You know, even though the state really doesn't know what's going on, she's been really good to contact the people she knows and get it all laid out before.
And as Dr. Brown told us, this wouldn't count as the mandatory one or three credits, however many credits the state's gonna require professional development for every teacher for certification next time that goes around. But at least it gets us started to have the conversation. I will put, make sure those two days are on your calendar, and you are welcome to come to one or both of them. If you're interested to see what we're doing on those professional development days. Thursday will be, we have a keynote speaker in the morning, Merrill Hodge, Hodge or Hodges?
Hodge.
Who played at ISU and then went on to play for the Pittsburgh Steelers and is now an ESPN analyst. He's coming to Lakeland to do a keynote for us.
Very cool.
About whatever it takes. That's his motto. If it's hard, you just, you gotta get through it and you do whatever it takes. And he's got quite a story to tell, so we'll have the keynote and then breakout sessions for both elementary and secondary. So I'll make sure those are on your calendar.
Do we need any further discussion on the dyslexia? I do know it.
I don't know.
We do need to have a little discussion on the enrollment verification, there are some questions.
So the board closed the borders, and immediately, people are living with people. And are, we don't really know what to do with some of the, like, one family has, owns a piece of property or something here, they're not living on it, it's an LLC, so when they uploaded their residency, they uploaded that, but then all of their bills, or their address is in Hayton, they live in Hayton, they're not living here. And we have other people. Mom's living on a family member's property, receives no mail at the residence. All, her kiddo has an IP from Post Falls, so they're living in Post Falls. Live, you know, living on family property, no utility bill. We, we're trying to do this to keep our class sizes down. I don't know how to actually say to the board that, or keep where the people who are supposed to be here are here. So our admin assistants are pulling out their hair, they just don't know.
From what I understand, there's also a question that, that people that lived in the district and have since moved out of the district believe that they were grandfathered in because they were in district, but have now, just because they're now out, but they think that they're grandfathered in. So we need to specify too, that you're only grandfathered in if you had a zone transfer, you were already out and you've done a zone transfer and you were grandfathered in based on that zone transfer, not that you were here and left and your kid still gets to come here.
Right, right.
I did think we made that fairly clear, wouldn't we? We sort of had that discussion, I think.
From what I understand, that's not necessarily the message that's...
Getting to people.
Yeah, the, the conversation that we were...
Lakeland Middle School specifically is, is the issue.
And it's, so that Lynn and I, our conversation with them, based on our conversation with the board, was we're grandfathering people in basically because we staffed for them. And so in our minds, that translated to, you were here last year, you get to finish here. So that's our fault, so we can fix that. So only people who actually have been out of district are the ones we're talking about.
And just because they've been here and they've moved out of district, doesn't mean that they're allowed to come back into district because they've moved all the country. I mean, you, you have to keep the boundaries within this.
That's why we're doing the address verification to make sure you still live here. No, if you've moved, we're, we're saying...
You moved out of district.
You now don't live here and you, so therefore you...
You don't get to come.
Okay, that's our fault. Yeah. But we don't know what to do about the people who are bringing us a handwritten note saying, let me...
Make it like Lakeland Little League.
And what's that?
You have driver's license, school records, vehicle records, employment records, insurance documents, welfare, childcare records, federal records, state records, local support payment records, homeowner/tenant records, military records, motor registration, utility bill, financial records, medical records, internet cable or satellite records.
So, so we require either a lease agreement, a rental agreement, or a bank statement, a mortgage statement, to show that, that you actually are, your name is on something in this district as far as you're responsible for that payment.
Tax assessment.
And tax assessment, and then they can use a utility bill. We don't allow driver's licenses, because by law, you can go in, after you move, you can go in and update in DMV, but you don't have to change it on your driver's license. So I could move from where I live in Rathdrom to Post Falls, and I could change it in DMV, but it doesn't show up on my license. So we don't allow that. But what they're saying is, is that they, I, I, I don't have anything in my name, I'm living on this person, living in my fifth wheel on this person's property, I don't have anything in my name, so I can't provide...
Well, then there needs to be a lease agreement. And the lease agreement can be, you know, so-and-so is living here and they're paying zero dollar rent, I don't care. But it has to be a legitimate document that...
Signed by both parties.
Yes. Not this hokey pokey...
And the other party has to be the property owner.
Yes.
And that can be verified on the county website.
Yep.
If that's what you need to do.
It still doesn't mean they're living there.
You are correct.
Right.
However, if there is an agreement and we go there for whatever need there be to do that type of a check, I mean, there's ways to find out if we're being lied to.
Are you, are you...
Are we really worried?
Are you requiring more than one piece of verification?
Yeah, so there's the, they have to show that they actually are living on the property, and then they have to have a utility bill.
Or a bank statement, didn't you say that?
We've said, we've said utility bill.
Oh, just a utility bill?
Because it's easy to tell your bank to send my bank statement to so-and-so's house and you go pick up your money.
In the past, we used to have them sign an affidavit of residency, and that had to be by both parties. The person that actually was the owner and the person stating that they were living there, it doesn't mean that they're honest about it when they sign it, but at least it's...
And then is that notarized?
We could go back to, we did used to do that, so we could go back to that, and at least they're lying on a formal document instead of a piece of paper.
They're honestly lying.
And not everybody's lying.
Correct.
We definitely have people who are living in a fifth wheel on somebody's property, because there is no place to lay.
Right, right.
So that, we know that, but it's hard to separate who's playing the game and who's actually being truthful. So, do we still have a copy of that affidavit? Yeah, so we could use that.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. So do you need any further discussion on enrollment verification?
No, thank you, I have my marching orders.
ISBA Annual Conference, we need to find out who is going to attend.
Won't be there. It's in Coeur d'Alene this year.
Yes.
Yay!
So don't have to travel anywhere.
Yes.
Yeah, I can make that.
And could I ask a question?
No. Go ahead.
Eight years ago and seven years ago, I, as the assistant superintendent, went to the ISBA conference when it was in Coeur d'Alene, travel wasn't involved, simply because there's, there are really good sessions
There are.
that were good for me to attend. And so I would request, since it's in Coeur d'Alene, that Dr. Pasley join us.
Okay, and you're planning on going as well, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yep.
I don't, I don't see a problem with having a assistant.
I think it's a great idea, that way we're all getting consistent information.
Yes, check it out.
It's good too.
Report back.
Yes. Take notes, copy his notes.
Sorry, so who's, who wants to attend, so I can go up to one?
Dave?
What?
Only in Coeur d'Alene, Dave.
It's Coeur d'Alene!
Well, like Coeur d'Alene.
You'll have to notice it too, because there will be little...
Yeah.
It's the eighth.
November ninth, it'll be your...
I don't have to go to the whole thing, right? Just a couple sessions or something?
Well, it's, it's actually really good.
You gonna stay at the hotel?
No.
No, it's not a vacation, Dave.
Are you giving us discounts?
Ooh, can we get discounts?
Ooh, can we go to the spa?
Yeah.
Yeah, hey.
As I said, we might get discounted rooms and that.
That would be fun. You check that out there.
I will.
So you're going...
We'll get back to you in December.
That's after! November!
Although it is Veterans Day, and I really, really like going to Veterans Day assemblies, so that's gonna kill me.
That sucks.
Yeah, the eleventh, yep.
Well, I think the eleventh is a short day, isn't it? It usually is.
Most of the assembly is in the morning, so...
Fridays is over at noon, however, it's the business session. So I would say we all will need to go to the business session if we don't want to. But it's, there's a breakfast buffet, there's a general session from eight to eight-thirty, and then there's the business session and the clerk's corner from eight-thirty to twelve. So I don't think it would infringe on our ability to attend the Veterans Day.
I agree.
Okay.
Because one person can cast the ballot for the board, right?
Yeah. Not it. No, it's guys.
Ramona, Ramona.
What, Ramona said she'll go.
To the business meeting hall, actually, I was thinking, I would be probably one of the things I would be interested in.
I'll go with him, just forget the rest.
I'll go to the business meeting, I don't know.
Can we like just pay for two registrations and each of us go for like a day? Oh, goodness.
We'll show up.
They're so smart. Do they have a list of... They don't have a list of what their workshops are yet?
I think they're actually still accepting proposals.
Okay.
They do have a couple things up here, the events.
Show us the keynotes.
Yeah, have the keynotes and region meetings.
That's still all TBD.
Yep. Yeah, just lists who they are, not what they're saying. Bummer deal, but it appears that all five of us will be attending the conference. I suppose you don't want to go, you don't have to go.
It'll be good to...
Is that an athletic dude? Look thirsty, keynote speaker.
Who is an ex-NFL person.
West Point graduate.
Come on, doesn't that interest you at least a little bit?
Not really.
Okay. Ooh, you think that's hunting season?
I don't think it's hunting season.
I know, that's gonna kill Chris. I do that instead of... Now we can... So, okay, I won't force you to go, Dave, but...
Yeah, we should, in the meantime, probably finalize ourselves with the resolutions too and...
Are they even listed?
Yeah.
Where are they, because the workshops aren't?
Yeah, underneath the business session link.
Business session.
It gives you everybody who's running for an office. And then overview, the rest of, and then their...
So there's only nine resolutions?
Yeah, and then their recommendation of...
At this point?
Right.
Okay.
So we have nine minutes before we have to adjourn. And we still have attendance policy in our...
Board member participation for the long range.
That's just a quick question.
Yep, in our executive session.
So for long-range planning, I just was interested to know if any board member wanted to participate on that subcommittee of the board.
When are the meetings?
Well, the first one is Tuesday this week and then we will set the meetings. I'm hoping that they'll be on Tuesdays, just
At what time?
Right, this week is five-thirty. I just need to ask the group if that works for everybody, if there's a better time, so.
I think there should be one board member
I think there should be as well.
Yeah.
Or at least if we can float the meetings, so take turns and going.
Rotate through.
Yes.
Just so you can get a feel.
Yeah.
Yeah, the committees.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a really good idea.
First meeting.
Bob?
Bob, thank you for volunteering.
What'd I do?
Volunteering to go to the first long-range planning committee, which is Tuesday at five PM, five-thirty.
It's coming Tuesday? Send me a reminder.
Yay, thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Bob.
Dave would also like to attend.
That's already
And Dave, amazing.
It's already on the board.
It is, yeah. Okay, that was all I needed, thank you.
Perfect. Now, I don't know what's up with attendance policy. I was in a Friday's meeting.
Well, we just decided because it's such a beast and there are so many things, the, the main thing that started us down this rabbit trail is that the law specifically says that the definition of truancy is whatever the board decides. So if we're gonna do ninety percent attendance or sixty-five percent, do we send a letter at nine days, ten days? And at what point, all these letters about, hey, your student isn't at school, I mean, it's just, it's huge. And to read through the policy and decide what the board's gonna do, we have to decide when the letters go, how, you know, what the letters, do we even send a letter home? Do we do a phone call first and then a letter? Because we have to ultimately come to a decision of what is truancy. Yeah, it's sort of
We haven't been taking kids to the board for truancy
For about six years.
Yeah. Yes. And we have kids who are missing fifty days of school. You can't
They have what?
Missing fifty days of school.
Yeah, that's ridiculous.
I know.
They shouldn't get credit.
Yeah, well, and that was the other thing too, is in deciding the truancy thing is that the credit works when we get to eighth grade for math and then through high school, but kindergarten to seventh grade, what do they do?
Maybe a determination of whether or not they progress.
Yeah. So those are the things that when we really got into it and then we started looking at, that's why all of the statute sections are in there too, is because it really relied heavily on, you know, what the board's definition of these things are. Cause not only do they come to the, they would come to the board in some instances, but once truancy is actually established, it says that they're supposed to be turned into law enforcement too. So
And then is the habitual truancy definition there? Cause that one specifically says that they can be found habitually truant if the absences are deemed to have, to be avoidable.
Yeah, but only whatever the board establishes. That's the thing. So it's like after we got so far through it, you know, we don't know what that is.
So is this something that we should do a workshop? Like, is it that deep and big that we should do a workshop to determine all that?
Or at least have a part of a meeting that's gonna take a lot. They were hoping to have it done by the time school started, but
Yeah, no.
If, yeah, but if at least they know it's coming and that they can let kids know that your absences actually count and so you better be careful about how you're using them. Our, our high schools are desperate to get an attendance policy put back in place.
Well, the policy
Right, Bob?
Right.
Do we
They see it got over ten yet, right?
Yeah, I know, we could petition for your grades.
Do we happen to have the policy from, for attendance from oh-seven and twenty thirteen?
I have no idea.
Well, we should.
But do, do we have books?
We have, I have, I have, yeah.
Okay.
Oh-seven and twenty thirteen.
Because the policy was adopted on August thirteenth, two thousand and seven. It was revised again on December ninth, twenty thirteen. And then it was revised again, which is the copy that's on the website, June thirteenth of twenty sixteen. I think it would behoove the policy committee to see what was in oh-seven and what was in twenty thirteen.
Right, see if that's something we wanna go back to.
Yeah, we tried to find all of them, what's attached here is, should you go back through and looked at what we could find and then melded them together, the same thing with the black and blue and red. But yeah, you're right, they
Because instead of trying to reinvent the wheel off of those recommendations, I think if we had a standard practice prior, and we figure out what that standard practice was and how far we deviated off of it, we can go back. And as long as it's in alignment with statute, there's no reason why we can't just do that.
Yeah, the, the practice was exactly what Dave just said. If you missed more than nine days in a semester, you lost credit, you could, at the high school level, you could petition for your grades. And there usually was some work that had to be done in order to, to make that happen. At one point, Saturday school was an option to come in and make up some time for the time missed. And then if you did whatever it was that was agreed upon and you, that you're great, you could keep the grades that you earned. At the elementary level, it was, we'll have meetings and we'll, I mean, it was still holding them to the same nine days, but it's not the kids, at that point, it's not the kids.
Usual.
Yeah, it's almost always the parents. And so it's a kind of a different beast. And there's an elementary principle. I had two, two situations I brought to the board for truancy. I mean, the kids are missing constantly and it was the pain, it wasn't the kids, it was the parents. And the board forwarded the case to the prosecuting attorney and they were prosecuted. And it's a misdemeanor and a fine. And then oftentimes, family counseling is required. And there's some supports that are put in place. So it was ben, it was beneficial to the family.
Well, we have to make attendance a priority if we expect to educate these children, so.
Yeah, we've in, in Lakeland, we have, we had the luxury of not really having to deal with a lot of learning loss because we only shut down for the fall of twenty twenty. But there's a lot of learning gaps that have been created because, because we have said to kids, if you're not feeling well, don't come to school. So you can't hold them accountable to attendance when you have, oh, you have a sore throat or a cough, you need to stay home. Oh, you know, the sniffles, you need to stay home. And hopefully we're past that and kids can just, it's a normal year, kids can come to school. But we've had two years where suddenly kids are struggling to have a five-day work week. I'm gone on Monday, I'm gone on Friday. And they're missing a lot of instruction.
Oh, that doesn't help the learning environment.
Yeah, so that's why it all came back to the board because once we got there, it was like, oh, well.
Yeah.
We don't know what that is.
Well, I would say it would behoove the policy committee to have the historical documents.
Yeah. I agree.
Okay. All right, so is there any, there's no action items, I don't believe, that are necessary from the discussion items? And do we have any input for future agenda items?
No, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. Nope, I'm good.
Okay. Right, with that being said, I'll entertain a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code seventy-four two oh six one B and D.
I move that we move into executive session per Idaho Code seventy-four two oh six one B and D. Second.
Having a motion in a second, we need a roll call vote.
Chair Twilson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Kristin?
Yes.
Trustee Jones, trustee Bane?
Yes.
Trustee Quimby?
Yes.
Okay, at that, we are in executive session. Y'all are free to go. Okay, so we've come out of executive session and are there any, I'll entertain any motions at this time.
I move that we not let employee eight dash seventeen dash twenty, twenty-two A out of their contract.
Second.
Hearing a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. That concludes the meeting.